Welcome. Tonight, I'm going to welcome you to the December 12th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. My name is Lisa Ellsworth. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. I apologize for the technical difficulties. Please bear with us. May I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lassen.
Yeah.
Great. I heard you just. That was great, Chris. Thank you. Commissioner Bartel.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Hernandez Mahé.
Here.
Chair Ellsworth. And I have some excused evidences from Commissioners Berlin and Bravo. And I don't think I heard from Commissioner Corry.
Hey, does everybody have a copy of the minutes? Is there any corrections, additions, or changes?
I have none.
None.
Hearing, seeing none, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Sounds like we have a motion and second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Do we have any business from the audience that is not otherwise on the agenda this evening? Seeing none in the room and no one online, go on. Do we have any communications from staff?
I do not.
So tonight, I want to introduce us. We are having a quasi judicial hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to ensure that all interested parties can offer relevant evidence to the commission in a timely and orderly manner. So I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. This is a design review, 24-04, and a variance, 24-01, related to CMX Car Company. So let me first start by asking if there are any declarations, any ex parte communications or contact with the applicant or other individuals.
Just driving on I-5.
I don't hear anyone? Has anyone visited the site? Hearing none, I'll go on. Any other conflicts or bias that would preclude you from making an impartial decision? Hearing none? Are there any challenges from the audience on a basis of any discussion or omission by the commission? Hearing none? I will ask that you read the hearing statement for us. Thank you.
Both Oregon Law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi judicial land use hearings and require that at the commencement of the hearing, this, a statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows. These are from the Woodburn Development Ordinance or the WDO. WDO 1.04.03, WDO 2.03, 2.06, 3.01 through 3.07, 3.10, 3.11, 4.01, 4.02, 5.03.02, and 5.03.12. The hearing will proceed in the following general order. Staff report, applicants' presentations, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation, and decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeal based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any party wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is still open.
We do. Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, my name is Dan Handel. I'm one of the planners for the city. And yeah, I'm here tonight to present the CMX Car Company redevelopment project. So this is for 1221 and 1241 Evergreen Road. Oops. There we go. It is a type III land use application package, involves a design review and variance applications. So tonight, the commission is tasked with verifying the project complies with the applicable development standards in the Woodburn Development Ordinance. There are also four discretionary variance requests for you to review, and you would issue a final decision. So with that, I'll go ahead and enter the staff report and its attachments into the record. And I do want to just take a moment here to give you a little bit of context. The packet, the staff report packet that was mailed out. It's a little unique in that it has a little more in it than we would normally put. Conditions are a little bit heavier than we would normally like to see for just a simple design review like this. And some of the plans lack some detail that we would normally ask for. And I'll kind of pull the curtain back a little bit on the before process, before things come here to you as a body, decision-making body. The applicant would turn in an application. We would review it for making sure it has everything we need to do a full review. If there's something missing, we will have a little back and forth to communicate that with the applicant, outline, hey, we need this in order to do a full review and feel comfortable about it moving forward. And for this project, we had a couple rounds of that. And then on the second resubmital, they requested to be deemed complete and have anything else outstanding be addressed with conditions of approval. And that is a legal right in state statute. They are able to do that. So the plans are missing some of the detail that we would like to see normally. And I'll kind of highlight that throughout the report and the presentation here, but ultimately, I'll give you a little spoiler. We are recommending approval with conditions. We believe it's feasible for the applicant to meet those conditions, even though it's not shown right now. So with that, I'll go in and as we move through the various topics, I'll highlight some of those issues. To give you sense of where we're looking here, this is the northwest corner of town along I-5, north of Newburgh Highway. It's a site on Evergreen Road. It's next to the Best Western Hotel. Denny's Restaurant is right there. It's also the old Al's Trailers site, if you're familiar with that. Looking a little bit closer, it is occupied right now with the CMX Car Company. They run an auto dealership out of an existing manufactured office building here. This is Evergreen Road. Tom Tenant Drive is right here. The city's transit center, Park and Ride, is just south of here as well. But anyway, they've got an existing small parking lot up front serving the existing office building. The rest of the site is display vehicles for sale. They also have an existing metal structure building back here. In terms of zoning, this site is within the Commercial General Zoning District, and it is two properties. It's technically two lots. That's why it has two addresses. But it is reviewed as one site, and there's no issue with it covering two properties. And you can also see all the adjacent properties around it are also in that Commercial General Zoning District. The site falls within the interchange management area overlay zone, but that really doesn't apply here because it's already a developed property. That overlay zone only applies to certain undeveloped vacant properties, where we look at trips and how it'll impact the interchange and all that. So not applicable here. A couple more pictures. So this is, the top photo here is looking at the site from Evergreen Road. You can see the existing office building there as well as that shed kind of in the background. You might be able to make that out there. And then the other photo here on the bottom, that is the northbound I-5 on-ramp. Just as you were leaving town, that would be the view into the property that you would see. So tonight, the proposal is maintaining the existing use, so it'll still be an auto dealership. They are proposing to remove those existing structures. So that would be the existing office building right here and that metal accessory building over here. And there'd be a new, just over 13,000 square feet, auto dealership building. Some parking improvements. Again, outdoor display area for vehicles for sale, some landscaping. There would be, the primary driveway here is that existing driveway. So that is maintained. They have a walkway proposed along the north of that main entrance there connecting into the building. Looking at the building itself, it's basically a big rectangle. Siding, exterior siding materials proposed to be stucco, painted grayish-blue. There are some storefront garage doors, canopy on those facades there. That would be metal painted in a black color. So I have a few elevation pictures shown just to give you an idea of what it would look like. So if you were to enter the property from Evergreen Road as a customer or an employee, visitor, this would be the view you would see here in the main building. The main pedestrian entrance would be right here. You've got a canopy over this. Driving out of town on I-5, this would be the view you would see kind of the back of the building there. And then this is that south side of the building, really set up to capture the sunset. So it'll be great views from that side. So in terms of architectural design requirements, the proposal generally meets all the standards. We do have in our development ordinance provisions that seek to reduce visual monotony in commercial buildings like this. So there's a variety of ways to achieve that, whether it's siding materials, paint colors, actual articulation of the building, whether it's multiple floors. If some parts come out, some parts are recessed in. There's a variety of ways to achieve that. But in this instance, staff's recommending a condition to just add a third material and paint color to the building to add a little more visual interest. Not a strict requirement. This is discretionary design review, so it'd be a guideline. But that is a condition that staff is recommending. Looking at parking and outdoor storage on the property, this is one of those areas where the plans are lacking some of the information that we would normally want to see prior to bringing a project to you for a public hearing. So you can see, I've highlighted the building here in yellow and the parking lot in gray. This would be the customer, employee, service area parking. So that, that is separate from just product storage. You know, it may look like a parking lot, but it technically is product storage. And that's kind of all the area in white here. So plans were clear on this gray area being paved. Wasn't as clear on the rest of the white area, whether or not that was paved. Our code does require parking and storage areas to be paved. They also have to be at least five feet away from the property lines, the perimeter property lines. And you can kind of see here, it's a little unclear up on the north boundary towards the northeast there, and then also along the south half of the property as well. It's just kind of not clear where those boundaries are and whether it meets that five-foot setback. And to help delineate that setback, our code requires a curve between any parking areas and what would eventually be perimeter landscaping in that five-feet area. And then we also have requirements for electric vehicle parking, carpool parking, bicycle parking, and those weren't illustrated. So to summarize, we are recommending a condition of approval, condition 14, to have plans revised to demonstrate that that conformance with those provisions prior to city issuing a building permit. Kind of same deal for landscaping plans, not showing as much of the detail as we would normally like to see for something we would bring to you for hearing. I've gone ahead and illustrated here in the green the areas that they have demonstrated for landscaping and doesn't quite meet all of what would be required in our development code for landscaping. So the ordinance outlines requirements for setbacks abutting streets. So that would be here along Evergreen Road, as well as Tom Tenant Drive here. There are landscaping requirements for those parking setbacks along the perimeter. So that five-foot setback would turn into landscaping area. So that would be the north boundary here, as well as the south boundaries. We have landscaping requirements within the parking lot, which have been partially illustrated throughout here, these little landscaping islands, although there are additional islands required by our code that aren't shown here. So all in all, we would need to see those landscaping requirements recalculated to demonstrate it meets the code requirement. And we do believe, similar to the parking condition, that this can be handled and addressed feasibly by the applicant prior to building permit issuance. If you think about it, it's a big rectangular building. The rest of the site is generally open parking lot. So there's a lot of flexibility in terms of how things can be laid out. So we're comfortable with that as a condition of approval. Looking at how vehicular access is proposed and accommodated on the property, I'll briefly describe the existing conditions again here. So we have that existing northerly driveway on Evergreen Road for the current building there. There's also a second existing driveway to the south on Evergreen Road. And right now, that gives access to the rest of the site. And it may not kind of seem that way, but there's also a third driveway here off of Tom Tenant Drive. This is a shared driveway. It's split half and half between the hotel property and this site. Actually granted all the way back in 1992. So it predates a lot of the development in this area, as well as the improvements that ODOT put in. But it is an existing driveway. You can see it has asphalt paved up to this boundary here, the hotel property line here. And that is a private access and public utility easement over that area. So three existing driveways. And for most commercial and industrial projects, the development ordinance seeks to minimize driveways, close any that aren't necessary or aren't being used. And in this case, because the applicant here proposes their primary driveway here is the northern Evergreen Road driveway, staff's actually recommending we close this southern Evergreen Road driveway. No longer appears to be necessary to serve the site. They will already have a separate driveway off of Tom Tenant Drive into the site. We've discussed it with the fire marshal already. He's indicated he doesn't have a concern with that driveway being closed in terms of getting adequate access to the site. So we are, staff's recommending a condition to have that driveway closed. Looking at broader transportation impacts of the project, we do have a threshold in our development code for when kind of a full detailed analysis of a development is required in terms of how it impacts transportation facilities, intersections, all of that. This project didn't cross that threshold. Between going from the existing structure up to the new bigger structure, we look at the net increase in peak hour trips, and it just doesn't cross that threshold. And that was reviewed by ODOT, as well as city staff and our third-party consultant. So all parties concurred on that conclusion. So we have a couple of simple proportionate share contributions that we're conditioning here. This is same conditions we've applied to similar developments in the area for I-5 interchange signal timing and then towards an employer shuttle that would run throughout the city for the Woodburn Transit Agency. A couple other things here, fencing on the property. There's some existing chain link fencing throughout the perimeter of the site. You can see here, this is along that shared driveway with the hotel. And you can see there's also some barbed wire on top there. And then the bottom picture here is the north property line. It may be a little difficult to see here, but there's also barbed wire along that chain link fence there. So for chain link fence, our development code requires like a vinyl coating on the metal to help kind of weatherproof it. And then we also have a requirement for privacy slats to... We'll give you a moment here in just a few minutes. Thanks. So we have a condition recommended to bring that chain link fence up into conformance with our code. They could remove it if they didn't want it. They could do a cement block wall if they wanted to do that instead. There's some options. Just if the chain link is going to stay, it does need to be brought up. And then for the barbed wire, that's actually prohibited by our code, so that would need to be removed. And then looking at another element here, there's a couple existing walls that were recently put in here. So a couple years ago, between October 2022 and November 2023, the owner built a retaining wall along that I-5 frontage. That's the north picture here. A considerable amount of fill was added to that property back there. So that essentially becomes a retaining wall there. And they've parked vehicles up on top of the new fill, presumably it's gravel. Staff's added a condition here, recommended a condition for a structural engineering report on that wall. The concern is there's a lot of weight being put on that gravel there and on the retaining wall. We just want to make sure it can hold that weight. And then looking back at that north property line here again, you can see there's a cement block wall right behind that chain link fence. And our development code has a few design requirements for walls like this. Gets that color, some paint colors. There's two paint colors required. There's like a texturing requirement for a portion of it. And then you have to provide some articulation in the wall every so many feet. So we just have a separate condition to bring that wall up to code. It's not required, though. The wall there is not a requirement. So they put that there on their own desire, so they could remove it if they wanted to as well. There's some existing signage on the property. You can see the top picture here, this is an existing pole sign along the interstate here. That was permitted back in 2022. So that's legal, inspected, all that. And then about a year after that, it looks like there was a second pole sign put up along Evergreen Road here. That's that second picture on the bottom. That we do not have a permit on file for. And I do just want to point out that the development code limits pole signs to one per site. So not only is it an unpermitted sign, but it actually would not be an allowed sign. So we do have a condition to remove that sign. And then separately, there's a number of flag poles throughout the site. You can also see some of the existing light poles. There's flags on that as well. Development ordinance outlines a limit to the number of flag poles in total flag area. So we also have a condition to bring those flags into conformance. Yes, please?
Is it two flags per property or two total if I hear?
It's a good question, and the code actually expects that question. And it says for a single tenant site. So this would be one occupant, one tenant occupying multiple properties. They would just be allowed the one pole sign and the two flag poles. So good question, yeah. They would be able to do like a monument sign, something that's only up to eight feet tall on that Evergreen Road frontage. That would be allowed, just the tall pole signs are limited. And then I mentioned this just a minute ago, exterior lighting throughout the property. There were a number of these light poles installed between end of 2022 and summer 2023. City did not have any permit or review done for these. They may have obtained electrical permits. I'm not sure, but we were not, staff was not involved in any review of those. And they do appear to be taller than what our code would require. And uh, they do appear to be taller than what our code would require. Uh, you might actually recall, uh, this is some new code language from a couple of years ago that the commission was involved in. Uh, so uh, these were uh, the provisions were a couple of months old at that point, uh, but they would still be applicable. Uh, so we've added a condition to bring all uh, exterior lighting into conformance. Another aspect of that is uh, we, we would also uh, like to see a photometric plan. Uh, that's getting a sense of how light kind of spills out throughout the site and uh, potentially out into rights of way or neighboring properties. Uh, we have some standards to limit that kind of uh, pollution spillage going out into the street. Um, so that's what that photometric plan helps with. Mentioned earlier, there are four variance requests associated with uh, the project. Uh, the first two here are uh, dealing with the street frontage improvements. And then we have a couple uh, dealing with access onto the property and then onto neighboring sites. So I'll go through those here. Uh, in terms of street improvements, uh, the request is for uh, not meeting our minimum improvement requirements along Evergreen Road and Tom Tenant Drive. Uh, just to kind of briefly summarize it. Uh, this image up top here is our standard cross section for what these local streets should look like. And uh, what's actually built out there was put in by ODOT uh, about 10 years ago. Uh, in some ways it goes a little above and beyond, and in some ways it falls short of what our cross section requires. And so the applicant is requesting to not totally reconstruct their frontage to meet our standard requirement because these are still fairly new improvements put in by ODOT. And um, staff's comfortable with that request, uh, it seems reasonable. The improvements are uh, adequate, functional. Uh, and they actually look pretty good. So, what's that? Right, right, exactly. So we're recommending approval of that variance. Uh, same deal uh, here with street trees along Evergreen Road. Uh, the code now requires 12 trees along that frontage, there's only nine. Uh, it used to, it used to require fewer and now in, in 2022, uh, council amended the code requiring more. Um, so they're, they're three short. Uh, but uh, it does look like as part of that closure of that southern driveway, they could plant one more tree there. And then uh, for the other two trees, uh, staff's just recommending a fee in lieu going into our urban forestry fund. Just to, to not screw up kind of the spacing and uh, any, anymore than they need to there. Uh, okay, moving on to the other two variances. Uh, the first one here uh, is dealing with cross access uh, from inside the site to neighboring properties, that's what this is dealing with. Uh, so the development code requires for commercial areas like this for properties to actually grant driveways up to their property lines with the neighbors and uh, private access easements. Uh, so that uh, people that want to drive between sites have a legal uh, and physical bit of ability to do that. Basically, it's getting at, you don't have to leave a site, go onto the street just to go onto your neighbor's property. Um, and, and how that requirement uh, applies here would be, uh, we have the property to the north. Uh, undeveloped vacant commercial site to the north that they would have to uh, extend their, their paved, uh, the paved uh, drive aisle up to that property line. Uh, same deal here to the existing strip mall building to the northeast. Uh, there would be a uh, paved connection here. Uh, and then uh, same deal here to the south, uh, there would be a paved connection uh, there. Uh, again, this easement already exists, uh, shared between the uh, hotel property and this site. Um, so we'd be looking at two new easements. They could consolidate that just into one easement if they wanted to, uh, but it would be granting access to the north property and to the northeast property here. And uh, ultimately that would connect back into their onsite kind of circulation pattern and go back to Evergreen Road. Standard code requirement, they're requesting not to do it. Um, and staff's actually recommending denial uh, of this. Uh, just for the simple fact of it's a redevelopment of the property, they're looking at uh, completely redeveloping the entire site. So um, it's feasible that they could accommodate these, these access points. And uh, you'll actually notice here that this property already has their drive aisle to that property line. So it'd be easy enough to tie in there. There's the uh, already pavement up to here, so easy enough to tie in there. Uh, and then on their site plan, they show the uh, the uh, parking drive right here, so it's only like 10 feet away. So they could just extend that pavement another 10 feet. Uh, so that's that variance request. And then uh, the last variance request is looking at pedestrian access onto the property from the street. Uh, because this is a corner site, uh, involves Evergreen Road and Tom Tenant Drive. The code requires pedestrian walkway from both street frontages. And the proposed site plan uh, has the uh, walkway from Evergreen Road here, this is the blue arrows to the building entrance. Uh, they are requesting not to put in uh, an access, uh, a walkway from Tom Tenant Drive uh, into the site. Uh, again, for the same reasons as the previous request, staff's recommending denial. It's a complete redevelopment. Uh, it seems uh, relatively simple enough to accommodate this. Uh, if you look at this uh, photo right here is uh, looking north along this uh, shared driveway with the hotel. Seems feasible enough to uh, just add that walkway right next to the driveway. And then uh, it could be uh, connected uh, up into this walkway there. But uh, summarizing everything, I know that was a lot, uh, staff's recommending approval of the project with conditions. Uh, again, we think uh, even though there are some deficiencies in the plans, we're comfortable uh, that they would be adequately addressed uh, prior to building permit issuance. Uh, besides that, there are a number of utility and access easements to take care of uh, because the site has uh, two properties. Uh, so uh, if the owner wanted to, uh, he could sell one of those properties at any point. Um, so that's why these utility and access easements need to be in place. Uh, we do look for a standard uh, fire department access plan, uh, just to verify that uh, a fire truck can adequately maneuver through the site. Uh, there are hydrants uh, spaced where they need to be, um, all those details. Uh, we looked at signage, exterior lighting, fencing. I mentioned a couple of proportionate share contributions for transportation projects. Uh, I mentioned a street tree fee in lieu. Um, and then just various uh, other conditions for demonstrating conformance with uh, the development code. Yeah. Uh-oh. That's not good. Yeah, yep.
I stopped hearing a nickel in my ear about 30 seconds ago.
Oh, I see Chris on the video, look at that. That's wonderful, alright. Think so. Chris, if you can hear us, can you wave at the camera? There he is, alright. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Alright. So I do have a recommended motion here, uh, after you uh, get through the deliberation and, and all that. Uh, but just to run through it quickly, uh, we're recommending approval with conditions. Except to uh, deny those two variance requests. It'll be up to you, uh, if you're comfortable with those conditions, uh, or if you want to modify things, uh, approve all the variances, some of them, none of them, uh, that's up to you. But with that, I will uh, take any questions you have. Uh, otherwise the applicant and property owner, or property owner and uh, his architect are here. Uh, and I'll have them introduce themselves as well. Could you, uh, could you hear Chair Ellsworth there, Commissioner Bartel? Oh.
Oh, no.
Alright, can you hear me now?
Hey, there we go.
Yeah. I was trying, I had my microphone off, so we didn't get a, an echo from Commissioner Lawson. So I was gonna start with you, Commissioner Bartel. Do you have any questions before we move forward? Have any questions for staff on the staff report presented?
I don't yet, I'd rather hear what the applicant has to say before um, asking any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Lawson, do you have any questions? Or did you want to hold it until after the applicant? So can you type in chat? And we'll, if you want us to call, we'll call you now, otherwise we'll, we'll try to connect you during deliberations.
We can't hear you.
Okay, let me try it this way. If you're ready to move on, give us a thumbs up. If you want us to call, give a, okay, thank you, we'll get it.
And we'll, we'll be sure to, to uh, call in at the end here, Chris. So you, so you can pick up your phone and ask questions and make sure to vote. Thanks, Chris.
Vice Chair, do you have any questions for staff?
I guess one of the things that's coming to me is with a retaining wall, and I know you mentioned you're wanting to have that checked. Are there any guidelines where that would just be making sure it's safe, or would there be also any requirements or anything that's off from the code?
Uh, thanks, uh, so the development ordinance here locally um, has really almost no standards for retaining walls.
Okay.
Uh, in terms of architectural design, uh, that would be more applicable for the, the wall on the north property line. Uh, but in terms of other requirements, uh, what were you, what were you thinking?
Uh, just because I know there was at least like the guideline for adding either a material or color for one of the sightings. Um, and obviously with the retaining wall, there being two kind of colors. Was curious because it would, there wasn't anything mentioned besides checking for um, capacity on that retaining wall.
Okay, um, very good, yeah, we don't have any uh, applicable design criteria for retaining wall. Uh, it's just limited to the, the architectural wall that you'd see uh, around a trash enclosure or uh, kind of like in lieu of a fence like you see on the north line there.
This one, I, I'm not probably expecting to maybe have an answer, but question and curious if when the first application came in for the uh, signage, the pole signage on the I five side. Was there any comment or, obviously there, you know, it was stated that there was no application or request for the second one on Evergreen, but was there any comment or such that there was only a limit of one and what that ordinance was at that time? In the discussions?
Uh, that, likely not. Uh, I can go in and pull up the approval, but uh, most likely not. I'm assuming at that time, uh, we had a discussion with the, the applicant and um, discussed signage generally on the property. But I don't have an answer beyond that.
Wasn't probably expecting it. I think that's really it right now.
Okay. And I don't have questions for staff at the moment, so I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward, give us your name and address for the record and
Address, address.
We can turn it on all the time.
And, and we need an address so that we know where to send copies of pertinent materials.
Uh, the address is 1241 Evergreen Road in Woodburn, Oregon, 97071 is it, obviously?
Okay, thank you. And your companion?
Ross Harland, I'm the architect.
And your firm, or your firm's address?
Uh, 3531 Drift Creek Road Southeast, Sublimity, 97385.
Thank you. Welcome.
Couple of things, uh, when Dan was speaking, um, one, uh, I, for some reason I, the sign company put the board signs off, had, they might have somehow missed the permit on that or somehow the paperwork, I'll call them, we'll get that done, that's not a problem. They should, because I didn't put them up, the sign company put them up there. And then um, the electrician who put the poles off pulled all the permits for, from the county. And then he was dealing with the city and he says, well, when we get all the permits done, he'll, he'll get it all done. And he's doing the variation on the lighting. So that's gonna get done, that's not an issue. The only uh, the only thing I kind of want to ask the commission and the city, the only issue I have, we have a lot of homeless people walk through there. Yes, they sleep underneath the cars, that's why we built that wall, because they were building fires on their side. And we were, we're trying to prevent a fire, I was gonna put a, that, that fence with a barbed wire was there existing before I bought the property. I don't think it's, that's even mine, I think it's the, the other people. We could take it down, it's not a problem. That's why I built that concrete wall to prevent a fire, because these guys were building big bonfires at night next to a car lot, which is all kind of cars and gas. So, and then those were all engineered with the wall buildup. We had a, we had a guy, we have the drawing with primitive, so afterward. That, and then the only thing I'd like to get, avoid putting a sidewalk on the side. Since we have evergreens all sidewalked around, everything else. Getting, encouraging people walk into a lot, I don't have a problem with him putting the dry base in, that's not a problem. We're just, we're gonna add concrete asphalt to everything anyway, we'll concrete all the way to the butt. Though, I doubt, that I have no problem with. The only issue is that sidewalk would encourage more of these homeless people in the past. We have unbelievable amount of break-ins in there constantly. Uh, the, the little wall up front of the freeway, I didn't want to put that up there. They stole three cars off it, they drove off the freeway. I was telling Dan, I got pictures of it, they went on up in the ditch, sat there for, till we get it off. So that's why we built that little trading, well, it's only two feet long, it's not that long. But it just prevents, and those poles are concrete in them, so to prevent them driving cars out of there. Um, so that's the only variance I'd like to get past if I can, the sidewalk. So that's the only variance I'd like to get past if I can, the sidewalk on that side sidewalk. It's just, it encourages theft. The security reason. It's not going to cost me anything to put a, at minimal cost to put a concrete in there, but it just try not to encourage. I'll do more landscaping if I have to. If not, that's not an issue. We're gonna put a plan your landscaping. A place will look, my idea of landscaping is going to be all tropical. I got that palm trees up front. We'll put more palm trees, bigger palm trees in the middle and stuff. We'll make it look nice. That's the landscaping. It's not an issue. But it's just that sidewalk, if I could get away with that, it'd be great. That'll walk back.
Well, and I'd say in support of that, beyond the pushback on that walkway, everything else that Dan mentioned. Since I got the report last week, I've incorporated most of everything else that was either on the variances, made adjustments to the site plan itself. And some of the other conditions that for me, they just seem like they'll be a part of the building plan supplemental. But everything's been taken into account and incorporated, so. So there's no, no oversights at this point and then, and no, no arguments or pushback about that it's unfair, unfair request, so.
Okay. With that, I am going to ask if there is anybody online or in the room that wishes to testify in support of this project?
Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Oh, I'm sorry.
At this point?
Do we have any questions for the commissioner, for the applicant? Let's start with Commissioner Lawson.
Oh, no, I have none. Thank you.
Oh, yay, we hear you. Fine, you're great. Commissioner Bartel?
Yeah, boys.
Any questions for the applicant?
I guess they don't necessarily have questions as much as they've mentioned that they agree with most of what Dan brought up earlier. And somehow I want to have that incorporated in the plan before we vote on it. And then where they, where they don't necessarily agree, or we were talking about the sidewalk. I think I'd like to hear back from Dan a little bit on that, based on the reasoning from the applicant.
Okay. I'll add to that. And just thinking about the driveways, because if there's a sidewalk or there's a driveway, I mean, I'm assuming it's also open and you could easily walk through, in through that as you would with a sidewalk, so. Kind of curious if there's any plans and like. For me, it seems like if both would probably be open and if you're having them in the driveway, like they seem the same for me.
When the driveway is open, if the driveway is open, most people won't walk through a driveway. But if you have, they have sidewalk all the way around the property and it will be obviously shown. It's just encouraging more walk to, it's not a walk, try not to, it's a car lot, you don't want, especially when it's a hotel. Kids could walk around too. We're trying not to encourage people walking through, that's like moving vehicles, big vehicles and cars. That's another reason. And then theft is my biggest issue. That security is really, it's just been tough and tough and tough. We're, one of the pools, if you saw on the I-5, we were tied up with the state for Amberger. They put that camera there for the I-5. That state, state put it up there. So we're, so we got that big camera there, state watches on I-5. We're gonna put another camera on this site. But it's just, the main reason is that, this building is sidewalks, 30 feet of concrete. It's not a issue. We're building all this concrete. Let's try not to encourage walking through people. That, that's the biggest reason.
Do you have any employees?
I have.
How many? Yes.
We're, we're 26 now. Where we were in Woodburn cross, we're next to the mall, we're at 50. So we'll get to 50 employees.
My, my thought in that is especially like, are any of your employees from Woodburn? I'm thinking more on like the biking, people coming in.
Or car.
You know.
I've, I've been to car, this is 25 years. I've never seen anybody bike to a car lot. Everybody drives or takes a cab covered by a car. I've never ever seen, literally I've been since April 2000, car, it's never seen anybody. But I, to your, to your comment, obviously you have that big driveway, we'll have the sidewalks, we'll have signages, we'll have all kind of indications for it to come in.
I'm just thinking as someone who sometimes will walk, I usually tend to choose a shortcut kind of thing. And if I'm coming in from like the Denny's, you know, safe way, like off the I-5 that way. I'm always choosing the shorter route and then just kind of cutting through like that shared driveway, for example, versus going around. That's kind of where my thing.
That will be a bill. That, that's, that's not a problem. Share of it, we're gonna put on the other side. It's already asphalted on this side. Well, concrete or asphalt, most likely concrete. Concrete the other side of it all via approach to it. That's not an issue. That's, that's what I'm saying. I've just put in a sidewalk next to it. That's I'm having a problem with. Because now I gotta build stairs coming to, because it's hill. We're sitting about three feet higher than the other property. Both properties on both sides were three feet higher, three, four feet. So that's gonna be, it's not gonna be easy. But that driveway is easier, it's more flat. If I do anything on the side, now we've got to build stairs from the sidewalk coming up. So you're really encouraging, it's really, because we're literally sitting over three feet higher than what the picture shows. On both, all three properties. I don't know how it was built up before we bought it. So the other ones are down. So we're three feet higher. So it's whatever's gonna happen, it's gonna be like that.
I'm fine.
Any more questions for the applicant?
And one more question I have, I'm sorry. Did I? That north.
You still have the floor.
I'm sorry. That north wall, which is a concrete wall, so that empty property right there. I got that wall. We'll open it up if we ever need to. Do we need to open that up if now or should we leave it alone till somebody moves in? And because it's just the dirt and it's three feet higher than the other part. And so can we leave that alone? Well, if we need to, we'll open it up. We'll eventually open it up. I'm actually in the process of, we might buy that thing eventually. So add it up to the lot, anyway, we'll take that wall out. That won't be gone or anything. But it's just for now, I'm just because we're not gonna go through the wall to the other side. It's three feet higher anyway.
Yeah, we would just, staff would be looking for at some point in the future, when that property to the north develops, then that connection would be opened up.
That's, that's, we'll, we'll, we'll do the concrete, we'll get it to the butt, to the, to the wall. We're just, we're not gonna be able to go through it.
Commissioner Bartel, just to your question here, well, I guess your request for, for my opinion. In term in terms of pedestrian access to the site and staff's opinion on, on that requirement, we, we have to take kind of the bigger, broader, longer term picture when we, we do reviews like this. So the property is owned commercial general. None of us have a crystal ball to see the future. The owner could decide in the future. I want to sell this 1241 site here. And somebody else could develop it with a use that might see more pedestrian activity. It's a commercial zone site, ton of different uses potentially allowable. So what we look at is kind of the long term. Okay, if things do change hands and things do get built out a little more. We like to try and, as we're able to get these various connections put in as development occurs to facilitate the site indefinitely into the future. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of insight into how we approach this. Oh, and I forgot I wasn't sharing my screen there. I'm sorry. Here's what I was looking at. Just this slide again. Oh, right, and forgot to mention, there is that park and ride, the, the Woodburn Transit Park and Ride, just a block south of there, so. So a fair amount of pedestrian activity to and from that area. It sees inner city buses. Obviously, the Woodburn Transit goes there. There's like Greyhound buses. I believe there's a chariots, Salem Chariots route that goes there. So, I mean, there's, there's a fair amount of connections that run through that, that park and ride. And that's just a block south there. So that's another component to that.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah.
If if you are required to put in a sidewalk and the left side is the driveway and the right side is your property, but you have to put a sidewalk here. Is there anything in the code that would exclude you from putting a fence on the other side of the sidewalk between the sidewalk and your actual property? So you could have a sidewalk and you could encourage people to walk down the sidewalk, but you could have a fence or some other structure that would dissuade people from going that way onto your property?
So if I might put a different slide up here just to see I'm understanding you right? So if we had a sidewalk put in on the right side of this, this driveway, are you asking if a fence was put in on the right side of that?
Could you put the fence along that?
Uh, yeah. Although the condition here, the requirement does have the, the walkway, well, let me, let me pull that picture back up here. It would have that walkway tying back into the overall design of the site.
Right.
So there would be at some point an opening.
The, the opening would be on with the end of the.
Correct.
Right.
But they could have a fence or a wall along it. Yeah.
Wanted to, if it was your property and you wanted to discourage people from walking along the sidewalk and just going up over the grass or going that way into the lot. You could put some type of approved barrier that would funnel them into an actual opening.
That's right. Yeah, and that's a simple over the counter fence permit. We look at those possibly, mostly for residents, obviously, but not for commercial, but it's a fairly simple permit. It's free.
If you've put a fence around three quarters of your property and maybe you want to put it around 70%, of your property.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I think I can understand, I can understand a bit about the security concerns when the lot is closed, you know, after hours. Unless there's a way to close off the driveway and that sidewalk so that folks can't go onto the property after hours. Is that? Is there some possibility of that? I certainly understand not wanting people to come in and mess with the cars, do damage, steal them, break things. That's, that's a concern.
I know that the outlet mall has gates that they swing closed. After certain hours, there's just a gate. I mean, obviously you can walk through it or climb over it, but you can't drive through it. So I imagine somebody could put in something similar to close off the lot.
Yeah, the, the main concern or I guess thing we would want to ensure is the fire departments consulted. They have certain locks that they use for these gates. So in an emergency, after hours, they'd still have access. But.
Well, we have no, we have no fence. I don't know, we don't have, we haven't fence. So fence encourages, becomes a storage, encourages actually theft. Fence actually, when you enclose area, that feels secure. That's that, when they break in, it feels secure. So you want, you don't want a fence, but you also don't want to encourage walking through.
Right.
So that's the reason between a fence and no fence. So again, the way the property sits, the only way for me to put a sidewalk there. I gotta build the stairs coming to, what is that street called?
Ten, ten.
Tenet, right. You gotta do, do that. They gotta be like practically three or four steps going down, two of that. So that's, that's what we're trying to discourage. So if you put a steps in there, now you really, you can't lock it up, you can't close it up. Now you have the handrails in there. Now you're really saying, hey, you could walk through here. That's what I'm trying. I mean, people could walk through a grassy area. It's.
That picture helps a lot.
Landscaping area too. So they could, see that, so they could walk through that landscaping area. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just, I don't want to encourage putting a sidewalk in there to encourage that. That's, that's what I'm trying to do. I mean, if somebody wants to walk through, they could walk through. And then obviously this side will, this side, I guess, this right here where the driveway ties in, the property is right here. So I'm gonna put a gate here. Open, open during the business hours, people drive through, walk through, whatever they want to.
If it's, if it helps for the commissioners' discussion. So this is one, this is one variance request that was submitted. Staff's condition is specifically number 13. I was gonna read it and Dan can pull it up, but if you were so inclined to include it or approve or deny the variance, it would be subject to essentially keeping or deleting condition number 13, which says the pursuant to blah, 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 the developer shall revise plans to add an eight foot wide side walkway connecting the main building entrance to the town tenant drive sidewalk prior to full permit. Okay, that's the single condition to consider.
So if the applicant is finished with their presentation, I will continue by asking if there is anybody in that wants to testify in favor. Seeing none in the room and none online, I'm going to ask if there is anyone that wants to speak in opposition. Seeing none in the room or none online. I am. There's no need for rebuttal, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and we will start to deliberate unless any commissioners have a burning question for the applicant or the, or staff. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing. And now we can deliberate. So I would like to see the picture again of the driveways that are proposed, the one, two, three arrows.
Uh, nope, not that one.
Uh huh. That one.
There we go. Let me share it for commissioners on call. Okay.
Okay, so there's two things. One is that you that the staff is recommending the blue arrow driveway be taken out. Is that correct?
The red X right there.
Other red, well, it's a blue arrow, so there's a red X. Okay. And now can I see the picture of the pass through that you are proposing? One has the driveway coming in through the neighboring property.
The north and.
Yep.
And. Northeast.
That one. Okay. I'm just gonna say that in my opinion, the one at the top and the one at the bottom makes sense. I do not think that the one in the middle makes sense. That's a very small, little.
What is that neighboring business?
Uh, it's a strip mall. There's a few different businesses in there.
Yeah, there's a hearing aid place, a hairstylist, Marion County sheriffs and one other business.
Yeah.
Me, it doesn't make sense to try to funnel traffic through that property even in the future. The other two make sense for future growth. That's just. Mostly what I don't want, what I wouldn't want to encourage is people exiting the property.
Hearing place right next to the fence.
It is, and, and it's right on there.
There's a fence, we've got a gate there, but I kind of, we never used it because of that. There's a fence, we, we got a gate there, but I kind of, we never used it because of that. You don't want to go through, especially we sit here for this whole tour.
Yeah.
Hearing place.
I guess I need to. Let people know that I use that hairstylist. And so I'm, I'm actually, I was like. Why would you want to go through that lot? That doesn't, doesn't make sense.
Uh, I would be in agreement that the three is sufficient, um. From the way that they're set up and. Also would be okay with eliminating that one at that top.
Yep, there you go. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, uh, I'm just thinking of the neighbors. It just doesn't, it doesn't seem to fit even with your explanation of future plans.
So then are you recommending that the one that they initially had the red X on? We take that red X off and leave it as is and instead eliminate the one. That we're talking about here on this picture?
I would be with eliminating that red X that was mentioned and that top. Yeah, that's.
And the top X on this page. I would require those two.
Yeah, the point would be that it would have three, one potential, and then the two that would be more active. Um, now.
Because you would still have the main entrance to the property. The gray entrance, which makes the most sense. You would have the one, yes. You would have one coming off of Tom Tenet, which would give you access to that. And then one at the top for future growth.
Correct.
But normally I am all for funneling traffic from, through the businesses, but that one is such a small strip mall. It does not seem like a good place. To require that. It's, there's a fence there now. I wouldn't make that a condition personally.
I was implying they got fence out there. It's, it's, they get a hearing need police and.
Yeah.
They're just the kind of businesses, there's a gate there, if you need to open, you open it. But I. We just, right, 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 you know. And a driving school.
Yeah, I think that's, I think you're correct.
It just feels like if you want three possible entrances and exits and you already have them. Why are we taking one away and putting in another one that doesn't fit very well?
Yep. So I will say that for me on the sidewalk entrances. I still feel like, especially the one going south, I know that that's the one we were discussing the most, um. It would still make sense to put something there, even if it kind of gets sort of. I don't know, faded out where it becomes kind of like the entrance point. Uh, where it meets with the rest of the parking, sort of parking lot, this lack of other word there. And the gate is kind of inclusive of kind of when it closes, it sort of blocks off the sidewalk and the driveway for those concerns. But I still feel like a sidewalk would be. Something good to have just again, I, I'm, um. For safety of being able to at least get through there. And, you know, again, this town is growing. Um, there's changes to not only the public transportation, it's very close to a hub where.
The car. It's not a shopping center, it's not a grocery shop in a store or anything like that, it's just a car lot. So it's, uh, uh, again, I'm not against putting a sidewalk in it, I guess. I'm trying to prevent some headache I'm gonna have later on. Or that's, that's, I mean, I could put it on and I, after I'm built, I got all my permits, I park a car in there, nobody can true. But I don't want to do that, I'm telling you upfront. That's, that's not a good idea to having a walk through, especially next to a hotel. Kids coming through there, run scum there.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna have to do a point of order and, and catch you off because actually we're deliberating. I've given you a little bit of leeway there. Um, can we hear from Commissioner Lawson? I want to make sure that, that you have an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, as I mentioned before, I, I think the presentation was done extremely well. I don't see any problems with it. Uh, it's, it's like a lot of the other ones that we've seen, uh, at least those of us have been on a. Funding commission for quite a while, uh, similar type of presentation. But I was impressed with the, uh, folks that. Put this together in the first place, not the only staff, but those, of course, that are controlling this. So, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm good with it. It's not a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
A little bit earlier. Um. So earlier we were talking about driveways along the street and then kind of the internal. Um. Uh, connections. Thank you. Yeah. Uh, so what I think I heard was that the commission is supportive of closing this southern Evergreen Road driveway.
Yes.
But, uh, not including, not including.
Oh.
Okay, so that's why I wanted to clarify that. Okay.
What I can't, what my question is, if we want to have three. Why are we taking one away and adding one when the one you're talking about adding doesn't seem to make sense? So the, the, the middle one at the bottom that you're showing right now, the blue one that it doesn't have a red X on it, but that's where you put the red X. You're talking about eliminating that one. And adding one up at the top. But the one you're talking about adding at the top goes through a small strip mall that's not really set up for traffic at all.
So I'm. There's one more at the top that would go in, that would allow for property growth into the next undeveloped area.
And I don't have a problem with that one either.
The third. Okay.
It's, it's the one that goes through the little tiny mall. As opposed to just leaving the one that's already there at the, in the middle that you're showing right here. I, I guess I'm not sure why we need to close that off, just to open up another one somewhere else. When it already exists.
Uh, that's precisely it. It already exists right here. So it would just be facilitating that connection through a legal means with an easement. Um. Uh.
So you're saying you want to leave it open?
Which one?
Uh, so this would be. Um.
If you put a number by.
Give a, hold on a second, we can probably bring up a cleaner slide, make sure we're talking about the right.
Oh, sure.
That might be easier.
Yeah, we'll think kind of, we'll go around the clock, right?
I just don't understand why the red X is there.
How many feet is, are the two entryways that are right now on Evergreen from each other? Cause I know that there tends to be a certain distance. That is. Aim for.
Uh, in terms of that.
I was guessing say about a hundred, ten feet, a hundred twenty feet maybe from. Space between.
Google says about a hundred and thirty.
Okay.
As I'm all.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bartel, if I could, um, maybe. Hope to clarify things a little bit, maybe. Um, it's Chris, Assistant City Attorney over in the corner. Um, so the policy reasoning, uh, behind. The policy reasoning there is to minimize the number of driveways going into sites. And so here we've got, as you can see, basically three driveways going into the site. But then there's a fourth driveway going into that strip mall. And so the idea is you get rid of the extraneous middle driveway there. And you put a connection through with a driveway that's already existing. So that's, if that's helpful at all, that's kind of the, the general policy reason behind it.
Did I hear somebody say though, there's a gate by that little mall up there?
So you're asking just, you're recommending just an easement that it already exists? Is that what?
No, I'm, I'm asking the one, the driveway that you're, you're recommending we keep up there that goes into that little bitty mall. Is it open right now? Like, could somebody drive through right there today? Or does it have a gate?
It has a gate.
While, while Dan's putting this together, this is Chris. I was, you're asking sort of about where, this is Chris Kerr, sorry. Two Chris's in the room. Uh, three Chris, that's right. Just to add, add into, uh, what, uh, the Assistant City Attorney was discussing. So we, we have policies in our comprehensive plan that look to, quote, provide interparcial circulation through crossover easements, back roads, shared parking lots where feasible. We have a, and the specific code requirement, the reason this requires. The variance requirement is we actually have a requirement in our code, and I'm sure if you're in the staff report, you can find it. Under access management. Um, and I'll get to the purpose of that statement because I think it gets to what, what you're asking about. It's a good question. Um, to implement the comp plan policies, I just read you a quick snippet of the comp plan policy that gets to this. It says, to red doors, to reduce vehicular points of conflict, reduce driveways interrupting landscape strips. And the pedestrian experience along sidewalks to preserve the appearance of street facing yards and developments other than multifamily dwellings like this commercial. Non-resident, for non-residential uses, unused driveways shall be closed. Um, and then it says they should also be minimized as much as possible based on the overall site design. So we have four different sort of provisions in our code that really look to achieve. What? Less driveways on the street, more connections between uses where feasible, they don't always work everywhere. So you have to look at them pretty closely. But most importantly, if it's a, a, a single lot. Um, you only look for a, a secondary drive if it's required for sort of a fire requirement, especially if you can't get another connection. Um, in this case, Dan, if I'm wrong, the, the purple arrow, thanks for putting this that way. Uh, that comes up from Tom Tenet. That you see, as you could sort of see from the aerial photo or from the, the Google view that he had. That driveway already exists, right? Right next to the hotel, it's sort of split. You heard the applicant say that the property line sort of split down though, that already exists. That's the act, that's the driveway access off Tom Tenet. Um, right now there's two off the Evergreen side. Um, closing one works, doesn't really work so much for his site today. And I just read a few of the requirements in our code that says closed unused ones, you don't want to have two driveways if not necessary. Which leads to where else do you get those connections and you time into others? I just wanted to give you kind of big picture, that's where they come from. And I think as you're talking about the, the red line or the red arrow, which is the one that ties into that small commercial center. I think, again, it's entirely the planning commission's decision. Um, right now it is a very small lot, you're right. It's pretty easy for someone to come in and quickly turn around or have another way out. Oftentimes you're stuck in the back of a big center, you need to drive all the way through and you're, go through the circuitous route to come back to another driveway and you wish there was a different way out. Probably a little less prominent here. Um, but I think the reason it made sense, I'm assuming is because there's already an existing asphalt lane that stubs right to his property adjacent to that site. Is that, that about it?
Right. It's set up already for it to, to occur.
Just some of the rationale and thinking about it.
And so it also feeds out on the Evergreen a little bit further up that we can't really see on this picture, right? So it also, for all intents and purposes, there's a third one along there. So then perhaps getting rid of the green one down at the bottom isn't such a bad idea. I think you talked me into it.
So right now the staff report, as the conditions do have a condition to, uh, close the green driveway, the green arrow. And there is a condition for providing the red arrow. Um, but if, if the commission's wanting to modify that, uh, it's, I can, I can tell you that number when we get there.
Well, I, I absolutely see the need for the potential blue arrow. Because you don't know what's gonna happen up there. There might be a new, something new coming in up there and you'll want to add something. So I think providing for that is good. I think I'm not familiar with that small shopping area, but it sounds like Chair Ellsworth is. So I would, I would kind of agree with, with her best estimate of, of what should be done right there. It, it seems odd to me to throw people through a small one, but if that. If it really would be all right and it would allow for the access that's needed. I, I guess that's okay with me.
And what are you proposing for the red area?
Well, I was proposing.
I'm sorry, I was asking our, our staff. What is it that? Because the, it's a, there's a parking lot that looks like a driveway from this angle. Right now there's a little fence that kind of precludes people from driving. Onto the C Mac property. What is it in the conditions that? You, that the city is proposing for that? Connection there?
Uh, good question. So we would have, uh, pavement. Uh, just kind of similar to right in here, this drive aisle between the parking lanes. Uh, that would run right up to that property line. Uh, there would be a easement, a legal, uh, document granting access. From this site. Through this property back to Evergreen Road. So that's what the condition would require. So it's physical pavement to the property line and then that legal right for. Uh, this property to traverse through the site back to Evergreen Road.
Okay, and when you were in negotiations with the property owner, there was no. Pushback or no concern about meeting that requirement?
Oh, well, they, they have the variance request to, uh, not provide that.
With, with that one? That one for the exit, before you had an asphalt. I don't.
That's, that's what I thought. So I'm thinking I would.
I want to keep the fence, I want to, I like to keep the fence.
I would agree with the applicant.
I've put a different kind of fence in there, but it's just the, the type of businesses that I really don't want, especially not people driving in. We encourage it. My mechanics. That's a problem, not driving in, driving out will be a problem.
So if I were to include in a motion or we were to include in motion. The motion would be to approve the applicant's request to not do that.
Correct. And then that would involve striking one of the conditions.
That would involve striking one of the conditions.
Yep.
And the other. I understand correctly. And. The applicant. And I'm asking them, okay. The applicant is requesting that they not have to meet that condition for the condition for the sidewalk. Those are the two pieces that the applicant is basically asking us to. Deliver it on, make a decision on, um.
That's correct.
With the, if we take out those two, two pieces, put it over here. If those two weren't on the table, we could then say we would approve with the conditions as outlined by staff.
Except for we'll give you the two conditions. So remember, so staff's.
Now, if we come back, if, if the commission comes back and says, well. We agree that that's that first condition for the red arrow. We agree with that, that doesn't need to happen. So we would. Remove that condition.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. If this, if the commission decided that the sidewalk was not required, we would remove that condition. If we decided that the sidewalk was required. We would open, we would say with what staff. Recommends with the exception of the arrow.
Just the red arrow.
That's exactly correct.
Yeah.
Or vice versa or whatever.
Yep.
So, uh, I'm trying to make this easy for the commissioner. So we. We being the city. And, and the applicant agree with everything except for those two things. As it were. Okay. Did I confuse everybody online? All right, so I'm going to. Try to get a little bit further in this deliberation.
And if it helps, staff can walk you through the conditions. And if it helps, staff can walk you through the conditions. I think the most important thing, as you said, is it sounds as if the discussion points you're going to have as to whether or not to require that pedestrian access from the south, or whether or not to keep that red arrow connection that you see on that map.
So I'm going to, I'm going to address them individually. Next chair, do you have an opinion on the sidewalk requirement?
I'm still thinking towards the future, and the statement of wanting to still, and looking forward, and I'm, I mean, I, I do hope, when I will say, I am happy that you're doing well and you're giving definitely an uplift to that area. That is wonderful. But also looking towards that future of wanting to double employees, and the city of Woodburn is growing, and there's not only with the transit, hopefully there's Woodburn residents working there as well, that they, some of them would eventually, again, maybe not any of them right now, but this is one of those things where we have to also think about the future, is some of them would probably take public transportation as a means to get to work. Maybe a phase, again, things that could change, and that option for me is still something that would be there. Maybe it's just one that goes along the side of the sort of driveway entrance, um, through Tom Tennant, and it just kind of blends in with the rest of the sort of driveway that's there, or parking lot kind of. And then it's just also included with the swinging doors, if that's what's going to be placed in there, uh, is my thought.
Okay, so yes on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
Long way.
Yep, that's fine. Commissioner Bartel, do you have an opinion on requiring the sidewalk?
Um, can we one more time see the photo of showing that, the driveway that's going from Tom Tennant towards the property, where we saw the, the bark dust? Is it possible to see that real quick? No, the closer up. Yeah, more of a street view.
There you go.
There, right there. Okay, so there's a fence. Is that fence going to stay? So where's the sidewalk going to be? Which side of the fence?
Well, it sounds like they're redoing the entire lot, so again, it's, for me, it doesn't sound like a very difficult ad.
Okay, because I would agree if that's the case, and that, that, I just wasn't quite sure where the sidewalk was supposed to go if there's a fence, but if the, if all of that's going to be gone, I think I would, I would err on the side of putting in the sidewalk. I would be in favor of putting in the sidewalk.
Cable box in here, there's no way you could watch it here. There's big, big cable box that the city, um, some kind of a city cable, I think it's a cable, it's some kind of a center behind this portion. So the only way to do it is going to be this way. And then, so there's no way you're going to move that, it's big. Uh, I think it's Comcast or, um, phone company or the, right, right in this area. Right, I don't-
But the sidewalk would be to the right of the driveway.
Big box in there. Okay. I want to say the phone company or Comcast or something like that.
For me, the sidewalk isn't a do or die. I mean, I would support having one, but I, I, to me, it's not a deal breaker. I, the red arrow, I would side with the applicant on the red arrow, the other issue we talked about. I would not be in favor of requiring that, that, uh, the sidewalk to me, I, I don't know that I have a sincere opinion one way or the other. Sidewalks are nice. I look to the future like Commissioner Hernandez Mahia does, and I'm hopeful that we will need more things like that, but I don't know.
Commissioner Lassen, do you have an opinion on whether or not to require this sidewalk?
I'm listening, as I said before, the other things that have been going on, and what Deb was saying. Because I get tired at night with this thing, and I'm fighting, I get, and I start losing my voice. Any rate, sidewalk, I think is fine. You put it in, as long as it doesn't create a problem for the developer, uh, with the fencing and everything, so. Yeah, I, I would be in favor.
And I'm right on the same fence as Commissioner Bartel.
Okay.
I have no strong feelings about the sidewalk one way or the other.
And are we just talking about this one? Because there's the other entrance as well.
The other one is, is- And it's not-
100% in favor of that one. I'm, this is the one I'm not speaking about, yeah.
Can you say yours again?
Okay, so there are two sidewalk requirements. One is this driveway between the applicant and the hotel. The other one would be along the proposed main entrance into the site. And I understand the applicant is in agreement to put a sidewalk there, so he's, he's in agreement with the city that it makes good sense to put a sidewalk to the front of the building. What the applicant would prefer not to do is have to put a sidewalk along the driveway between his property and the motel.
Is it a safety issue at all with traffic in the motel? Because don't they drive around the back to park behind the hotel?
That's part of what I'm, that's part of what I'm also saying is, if people are going to be, and again, may not be the situation now, um, looking towards future and growth, and that there may be more usage of the public transportation or such, that when they're walking through here, that they're not dri, walking right on that driveway that's shared. I, it's okay if it blends in once it kind of reaches that property, and it's not like a sidewalk that goes all the way necessarily through. But it, because it'll be meshed in with what their property is, but here, yeah, you could go through. I don't know what the transit is like necessarily there, and I'm sure it's not going to be always the same, but, because it is a hotel. But that's kind of one of the other reasons, is having that safety way.
That, this property is going to get all asphalt and concrete all the way to the, um, where the landscape is. So it's, uh, so the only, that, that's, it's, it is going to get all concrete and asphalt. So you got about 10 feet. The only reason I'm saying I don't want a step from here to there. There'd be a concrete that could be, I could market the sidewalk, it could walk through there, but I just try not to encourage this. This is the issue I have. That'll be all concrete, I could market however I wanted to.
Okay. Again, I'm going to have to kind of cut you off.
Sorry.
So I'm going to put this one aside. Excuse me?
I kind of understand what he's saying there. If it's going to be all concrete anyway, why do we need a whole sidewalk? A special sidewalk?
Well, couple things. He said he can market however, so in that case, he could designate it as a sidewalk.
You can put a yellow stripe or-
Yep.
I just did it for my issues.
Okay, so let's put this one to the side just a second. I took breath. And let's look at the second condition, which the applicant has asked us to not require, and that would be the red arrow that you see on this, this slide. And I'll start with Commissioner Lassen. Do you have an opinion on whether or not we should require that red arrow? And the conditions surrounding what that red arrow means?
I do not.
Okay. Commissioner Bartel, do you, do you think that we should require the, the drive-through there, or grant the applicant's request not to require that?
I suggest we grant the applicant's request not to require it.
Okay. Vice chair.
Or I support that, I guess.
Yeah.
So I'm not inclined in making them do an entrance there, but actually, as, the more we're sitting here, the more time I'm having to think, is that all going to be landscaped then? Because there wasn't, I know, I know there isn't a plan, but then that, it's adding more questions, I know that was left empty.
Uh, right now, there's a little bit of landscape there, I think.
So if the commission approved that variance request to not have the red arrow there, then it would be treated like the rest of the perimeter, and there'd be five-foot landscaping. Uh, yes, very good question, yep.
Thank you. But yeah, I'm not necessarily inclined. There's two entryways exits already, and I think that that's fine.
And I'm inclined to grant the, the variance to not have that be required. So we could continue to deliberate on the sidewalk. We could take a roll call vote. We could, we could do a motion and take a vote on the motion, or we could do, we could, we could draft a motion with the sidewalk, or we could draft a motion without, and then do a roll call vote.
I've been working up a motion for you over here that will incorporate both the sidewalk provision and the, oh, it'll incorporate whatever the commission decides. And so, and all, once you've deliberated on the sidewalk, I'll draft that into it as well, and then I'll double-check with our staff and our planners to make sure that I've gotten all the, uh, all the correct conditions cross-referenced and the variances cross-referenced, but I, I think we're moving in the right direction there.
All right. And I don't have a good sense of what the consensus or where the vote would come down on the sidewalk. So I'm going to ask the commissioners, would you like to continue to deliberate on the sidewalk? Thumbs up, or would you like to try a motion thumbs down? Who wants to continue to deliberate?
I actually start keeping, the more time we have, the more questions I get. I'm still happy.
Okay. So I have one ready to run for a vote. Commissioner Bartel, are you ready to run for a vote? Do you want to continue to deliberate on the sidewalk?
Oh, gosh. I can see both sides of it. I don't know if I'm ready to vote one way or the other.
Okay.
Can I make a small comment, maybe, and I'll look to Chris to confirm, because this might influence your deliberation. So the requ, the sidewalk on the south side from Tom Tennant is a code requirement. The applicant's requesting a variance to not meet that requirement for that provision. So I'm just looking at how many people are in the room. You have, there's four of you, unless Chris overrides me or says that I'm misreading it. It would take three people to vote for the request for a variance. So in other words, if you were split two to two, the variance would not be approved. Is that right, Chris? I think that might-
That's correct.
Might matter to you as you're thinking about it.
Yeah.
Thanks for that, because that also helps.
Yeah, well, um, what I'm trying to understand is if any more discussion will change anybody's mind. Or if somebody feels strongly enough one way or the other that you would like to try and convince your fellow commissioners that your way makes sense.
I think the way Chris just explained it actually clarifies it a little bit for me. I think it's a code requirement, so I'm inclined not to grant the variance.
Okay.
I would very much lean that way. And if I can add, and if this helps with anybody else's thoughts, is that, um, when the image was up, there was the comment about there's some cables there, and it sounded like, you know, it would be a bit of a hassle to move or do something there, because, you know, for adding a sidewalk, but the asphalt was mentioned to go past that point as well. So then maybe it's not necessarily that hassle, and I don't know if the asphalt necessarily needs to get extended. But, you know, the rest goes with what Commissioner Bartel also said.
Do you have a proposed motion?
Uh, just to confirm, so am I hearing from the commission that you are, um, in, you're agreeing with the staff's recommendation to deny the sidewalk variance there, just to confirm?
So you could, you could phrase it that way, and however the vote comes out, it would either- great. And we are inclined to remove the requirement for access from this, the small.
Okay. Um, well, in that case, I do have a draft motion, and I will, um, have staff over there confirm that I've got all the, uh, cross-references correct. But that draft motion would be to approve the application based on the analysis and findings in the staff report with the outlined conditions, except grant the applicant's request for a variance regarding cross-access to tax slot 4200, and strike condition 12B3.
I'm assuming you can put that up on the screen so we can read that?
I can't, but Dan can.
Okay. I'm happy to make that motion if I can read it off the screen.
Uh, yeah, just give me one minute to get that going.
Go pull the conditions up from the, if you're, if you have them in front of you, I'm on page three of the staff report, three of seven.
So.
Attachment 101, page three of seven.
Grant. That cross-access variance.
Uh, so it would be approve the application based on the analysis and findings in the staff report with the outlined conditions. Except grant applicant's request for variant, for a variance regarding cross-access to tax slot 4200, and striking condition 12B3. And just for clarification for the commission, as written, that condition does, uh, makes no changes to staff's recommendation regarding the sidewalk.
I'll go ahead and move. Um, I make a motion to approve DR 2404 and variance 24-01 based on the analysis and findings, uh, with outlined conditions, except grant the applicant's request for variance regarding cross-access to tax lot 4200, and striking the condition 12B3.
Here we have a motion, we have a motion in a second. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote this time, just to make sure that we, everyone is heard.
Commissioner Lassen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez Mahia?
Yes.
Chair Ellsworth?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, do we have any business from the commission? No, I will just mention that I recently attended a Secretary of State training on public meeting laws and some of the changes for public meeting laws. It was very informative. If you ever get the chance to, to go to some of those trainings, I would suggest you take advantage of it, and if the city of Woodburn brings that training to the council or other members,
Let me know.
I would love to make sure that the commission can, can attend.
I'm looking at the Assistant City Attorney. He's, he's the one who makes sure everybody dots their i's legally.
Yes, there's new training requirements, and we just wanted to make sure that we are all in compliance, and thank you for actually looking into that for us, but it was really good training. It helps you understand what's required. As far as meeting. As far as meeting, meeting protocols, minutes, things like that. Hey, do we have any updates from staff?
I was gonna give a couple, just an update on a few active projects that are going on. Um, I have my notes on them. I'm afraid got lost in the paperwork today. Uh, I don't know since the last time we met, I don't know if I mentioned that the, there was an appeal of your decision on the gas station property, which has been appealed to the city council. This is the property at, uh, Oregon Way in two fourteen, uh, and a, the opposing attorney, uh, representing a different property owner in town, appealed that decision to the council. So there will be another public hearing at the city council for them to make a determination. The entire record and the decision that the planning commission made, um, will be included. And that's sort of the starting point from there. And then the, the council will go ahead and make that, make ultimately make that decision on it. Um, and if that sounds odd, it shouldn't. That's exactly what happened the last time that gas station project. It got appealed from the, at the planning commission up to the council. And that decision or that meeting is supposed to be, uh, the last week of January. Um, and just two kind of, maybe three kind of quick things, uh. I think it's easy, uh, for staff and, and myself to sometimes kind of forget that, you know, you all get, you all approve projects and then they kind of disappear from your view. Uh, but staff has them and we deal with them for years and years after that while they, they get under development, they go through processes, they make changes. We got landscaping, civil engineering, building permits and everything goes through it. Um, there's a project, so I know we got a lot of publicity because of the Chick-fil-A project. Um, that was just, just opened their doors, I think less than 10 days ago, somewhere after Black Friday and last week, uh, they opened their doors. What I thought was interesting, and of course I got a couple of calls from the press about it, and I got plenty of phone calls from the public about it. Um, what I thought was interesting is I think the opening went very smoothly. Um, I thi- I really think it has. And part of that, some of you might remember, I think you were all here when the Chick-fil-A decision was made is you all spent a lot of time talking about what their opening plan was going to be. Um, because while obviously they're a big traffic generator, and you might recall that we made them go through a separate traffic analysis different from any other fast food restaurant. Right? We said, you know, you're not a Burger King. Chick-fil-A draws a lot more cars. So we asked for analysis from five other Chick-fil-A's that were already under construction, had them lay down the tubes and give us those numbers. And then we used the average of those three, of those five. Um, I think that gets to kind of, I guess, first of all, making sure that we're hopefully doing things the right way. Um, believe me, if the Chick-fil-A had opened badly and traffic was backed up and there was no plan for the opening, I would have heard an earful and you might have a bunch of people in the room screaming at you. What the problem is, you don't hear the fact that it did go well and it really did. And they had a very pretty robust plan. So you, you probably don't remember, but you all spent a probably a good 20 minutes talking about exactly what that opening plan would look like. Who are you going to talk to? How early, you know, you needed to, they needed to come to staff, I want to say 10 days before their opening and 14 days before. Talk to the police department, talk to the mall, talk to the fire department, talk with our public works department, talk with the planning department, me in particular. Lay down a plan, sketch out how it was going to work, show the signage, have cops out there moving people through, addressing these kinds of things. And again, it worked well. So I like that. I, again, you don't get credit for that and you should. So I, I appreciate the work you guys did on that. Truth is, most of these projects go through pretty well and it's because you guys spend a lot, you put a lot of attention to the details in there. It does pay off. Uh, you all have the same problem I have. When things go well, nobody says, nice job. They're like, yeah, it's just open. Well, you know, you'll hear about it if the building collapses or people are backed up. You all didn't approve the Dutch Brothers, so you're not, you're not getting the wrath because of that. Uh, but that's, but that's what happens when, when you don't do it right, I'm afraid. Um, so good work on things like that. I, I appreciate it. Um, and it is worth your trouble. That time is worth it that you put into those things. Um, you know, they can queue like 60 cars or something on that site because it's just a massive drive out. Ultimately it pays off and a payoff for a long time in the future.
That's a great use for a weird piece of.
It is a crazy, not even triangular site. And honestly, a Chick-fil-A is a really nice use for it. Um, so
Long driveway.
That is a good one. Uh, you know, I was going to mention, also mention, you know, I, I don't think I talked about it. And if you're watching some of the city council meetings, you're here. I mentioned briefly the fact that the city council, I should say, the urban renewal agency, agency formally pulled the trigger on the property on Young Street. So the, the city, ultimately the urban reserve area, urban, urban reserve agency has purchased that it's the old Young Street Market. It's on the south side of Young Street. It's the market that burned down. Um, it's probably, you know, a hundred yards off of ninety-nine, just west of ninety-nine. Um, the property is vacant. It's right next to the town, Tim Farms Fruit Place. Um, fruit packing freezing place. You all approved a, I think it was ninety-eight unit multifamily project in there. Um, a lot of discussion, it has a nice walkway and a nice public area along the west side and along the south side of it. Those plans and that property have now been essentially are, they're owned by the city. Uh, and the urban renewal agency purchased that. They paid one point three million dollars, I think was the purchase price. And the goal is quite clear. Their, their intention is to flip that to an affordable home builder. Uh, as you had to be determined who that would be so that that home builder can provide some much-needed affordable housing in town. Um, it's a big step. It was, it was something, it's, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, she said it's awesome.
Oh, it, it is. It's, um, I, I'm really happy to see things like that happen. It's, it's innovative. It's good to see them pull the trigger. I think the way that it was, the way that they, the way that was purchased is very smart, very, very low risk for the city. Um, in terms of the, um, what they paid for it, I can assure you, it was assessed at a much higher value or appraised, pardon me, at a much higher value than the one point three that was paid for it. So it's gonna, it's gonna be really beneficial for the city in the long term. It's a nice thing. Sometimes you have to kickstart these things happening. Frankly, that's just what urban old agencies are supposed to do. Uh, they're supposed to be putting investments into the public infrastructure or buying property and making sure that it's flipped to a user who's going to bring some value for the community. So that was something that took place. And I was just going to briefly mention the fact that we have, uh, as you know, the bond measure failed. It was proposed in the, uh, November election, um, for the community center project. Doesn't mean that the community center project is gone. It means that the sixty million dollar community center that was on the ballot uh, is not going to be built, uh, at this time. But the city is very actively working on collecting what money they can, because we had money from a few different sources. Some were city sources. We'd already allocated, had some money from SDCs and other sources. And we also received a grant, uh, I'm sorry, received funding, uh, from the state in, I think was more than a dozen million dollars, let's say, uh, in that area. And we're trying to make sure that we can utilize that for some other reinvestment of the community center. It needs it badly. So it's not going to be the sixty million dollar one. It's not going to be a new, uh, 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 essentially a tax on property owners. That was voted down, but there's still money out there that we've collected, been assembling, we've been receiving, that we're going to put to good use. Uh, that's not happening like this week, but that's sort of where it's going. I think it's a, that's just a quick update as to it's not forgotten that facility needs up, needs upgrades. We're going to provide them. It's just going to be at a much lesser scale. And I think that's the the kind of community discussion that the city and particularly parks and rec. And we already had a community, what was that board call? Were you on it? Adam Chair.
When it started.
Oh, there's a, we even had a committee who spent a lot of time looking at all the program in there. Um, and the last piece, just for what it's worth. Uh, we get a lot of, we have a lot of parks projects that are sort of underway. And I don't really bring attention to them enough. And I just thought I would just call a few of them out. If you haven't been up to the Dove Landing site up at the end of Boones Ferry Road. Uh, this is the project, if you're riding out of town on Boones Ferry, someone on the west side of town, it's the old, um, uh, hazelnut farm. Uh, got, it's being, it's, it was, uh, approved probably two and a half years ago as a planned unit development. Worked with the applicant at the time. Again, I don't, I think you were, most of you were here. I don't know if you were here, vice chair, when that got approved. And there was a lot of discussion about a dedication of a park to the city. And they did, they dedicated, dedicated a a, a huge, large linear park on the south side. I wish I could remember acres, but I'm bad at numbers. I'm going to guess more than four. How's that? Less than six, somewhere in that area. Um, and it's a finished park. So they put all the improvements under the review and guidance and inspection of the city parks department. I think that park looks fantastic. It's got shelters, it's got play areas. It's got fantastic kind of paved areas with the benches, um, kind of a picking up that motif we kind of established down at Smith, brought it and dropped it up there. Um, and there's a lot of sort of larger improvements there too, such as the, the big shelter area that's up there in the barbecue, barbecue places. Um, those are nice amenities we get. Yes, there's going to be a lot of housing built in there as well, a hundred and seventy some units. Um, that's what it is, right? That's residentially zone property, uh, but the city worked hard to kind of pick that up. So that, that's finished. That's officially a, a city park. It's been, already been dedicated. There's really nothing there now. Aren't a lot of visitors. But our parks department's also going to be completing, hopefully we have a final, we're, we're going out right now for the final, final plans for the, I call it the Boones Crossing Park. I could go back in eternity, but we'll keep it short-term. Boones Phase Six, which is right off Boones, right off, uh, Boones Ferry Road, all the way in the south end of town, east side of the road. Uh, you all approved a, maybe a nine, maybe an eighty unit, um, sort of town home development in there. Um, and next to that, uh, I think it's a three acre park. That was part of an overall planned unit development that was dedicated by the applicant to the city. They provided a lot of money for it. We use an SDCs for it. Um, so that park's going to be underway. The parks apartment or parks uh, committee worked a lot on that, figuring out what kind of pieces to put in it. Um, it's not huge, but it's going to be nice. It's a nice neighborhood park. That's going to be under construction. We get a lot of questions about it. And just for laughs, if you don't, I always forget, because again, I'm at these council meetings and I hear all the things that like the parks department people are doing and they kind of wash over me. And I regrettably, I forget them too often. I wish I could bring your attention and the rest of the public's. Don't forget that the dog park was just recently completely redone down at Centennial Park. So if you want to walk through, it's the sort of large dog, small dog parked on there. Um, I just drove down there with, uh, 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 Jesse looking at their, the new solar lighting that they put in. Um, so there's kind of this really cool, when you walk out, the lights are dim. And then when you walk out, they kind of get bright as you get near them and get underneath them. And there's all kind of funky little, you know, dog play areas down there. And I think it's corn, but cordon between sort of big dogs, little dogs. Um, just another, a nice feature, took a long time to get to. Uh, these things kind of take time, but they're, they're moving along in sync as we kind of do with, as we work them forward. So that was more Jesse banging on me to say, man, I wish they knew what was going on down there. So that was, those are a few things I just wanted to kind of bring to PC's attention. Um, the last piece is you are, we're not having a Christmas meeting, so that's, there's no meeting, no second meeting in December. And, but I am still at this point, I'm expecting to have, I don't have the calendar in front of me because I lost my agenda. He took it. Um, we're not, I, we, you should expect to have a meeting for your first January meeting. So the second Thursday, January ninth. Thank you. So keep it on your, keep it mapped on there. And as you see, uh, we had four tonight. So thanks for plugging away, Chris, to, to get online. I, we appreciate it. We couldn't have had the meeting if you hadn't, hadn't to keep banging away. Much thanks. And of course, thanks to you, Deb. Uh, so we need everybody.
Yeah.
That was all I had.
Right. You have anything for us, Chris?
Uh, I have nothing. No, I think Chris covered everything. Just, um, everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays and then a, you know, wonderful new year and we'll look forward to seeing you in January.
All right. And news about that public meeting law training?
As soon as I am aware of when it's happening and where it's happening, I know that this
They're sort of programmed in.
Offering a lot of them. Um, I'm not sure if this, when or if the city is going to be bringing them in.
Kaiser, because the city of Kaiser.
They have their act together at Kaiser. Is that what you said?
I will bring that to the attention of the city manager, uh, city administrator here, you know, Kaiser is doing it.
No, that was the chair.
But I, yeah, I agree. I think it's just a lot of.
Embarrassing for the mayor of Kaiser to recognize me and notice that I had to come to their meeting.
I, I agree with you, Chair, that there's a lot, the, the law has recently changed.
The laws have recently.
There's a lot of new information, um, some new compliance stuff. Um, a lot of it, it is not as straightforward as perhaps we would want it to be.
Nope.
Um, so those, those trainings are definitely going to be important, even if they're not required for everyone who sits on every public body. I still think, I agree with you. I think uh, attending them and having that information is really, really important.
Yeah. I'm just giving you grief. Um, most of you have probably heard me say that I am the records officer for the Higher Education boarding commission. Uh, I used to run a lot of their public meetings. So it's, it's very much something that I familiar with in my daily work. And when the opportunity came, I went only to find out that most of my other staff and other coworkers went two weeks later, but the secretary of state is giving a, a number of these trainings throughout the state. And they, I just happened to get an email from them inviting me to go to the training and, and I took advantage of it because like I said, it is part of my job and, um, but I, I had found out that there were a lot of law changes. It's like, oh, I didn't know, I I've got to go back to work and tell people about this. But by the way, Chris, can you look at this for me? So. All right. Anybody have anything else? And if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
I'll second it. All right. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right.